Okay, we're gonna call this special meeting order. It's basically a presentation on Hometown America by San Alex.
Okay. There's the agenda if you guys want. I don't know where you want me.
Wherever, it's good.
We have several people that are gonna be kind of stepping up and presenting today, but I'm just gonna say thank you for taking time out of your busy days to kind of hear what we've had going on. We've had 33 people in the community attend our Marketing Hometown America session. And we've had all generations there, which was kind of fun to see and to hear. We had some high school students that were involved in it. And just to hear the differences of opinion, the differences in the way things are done, communicated, so forth. It was kind of an eye-opener, if you will. So, one of the things I just kind of wanted to start out by saying is that we started looking for somehow, some way to poll the community of Washburn, to find out some marketing points. As I received the approval for the lodging tax fund, the $5,000 for marketing. You know, once we received that, okay, so what are we gonna market? Are we gonna continue going forward with Historic Washburn, Washburn, Missouri? Who are we right now? So, when I started reaching out to different groups and I met up with Jody Bruins from North Dakota State University. She's with the Community for Rural Vitality.
Community Vitality?
There you go. And we started talking about the program that she was a co-author on, which is the Marketing Hometown America. This program already had everything that we needed as far as a roadmap to get us where we thought we needed to be, to be able to market to Washburn and to kind of identify the good, bad, and maybe the ugly of Washburn, and what we need as a community to move ourselves forward. The other thing that we kind of had in the back of our minds is that our governor also is starting to move forward with his Main Street initiative. Knowing that that was gonna be a big push too, what did that mean? And after the legislature met and kind of what's come out of that is that he's really pushing more for a community atmosphere. And what does that mean to rural North Dakota? And coming from, why not, the Air Force Base and managing that community up there, the company I worked for had a program called LifeWorks. And LifeWorks was all about building a community, having an event, knowing what your members wanted, knowing what was needed in the community to make it successful. And it was something that kind of set us apart. So, being able to utilize the Marketing Hometown America and try to get there, there being, you know, what do we need as a small town right now? It really did provide that roadmap. So, why do we need small towns? Small towns need to exist just like our urban communities do. Right now, we've got several millennials out there right now that are thinking that rural communities are cool. They're coming back to rural communities because they like the geographic limits. They like to be able to have the open space. All of the amenities that we used to think we had to live in a city for, the shopping and so forth, we can all do online now. We have delivery services that deliver it right to your front door. Sometimes my husband wishes not so much, but anyway. Our town going forward is not gonna be the same town, community as we have that we're seeing today. So, I'm not sure what kind of planning, you know, you as the City Commission are doing or have done, but there's a lot of things that we need to be thinking about because, as I said earlier, with the generations, the millennials think a lot differently than we do. And that was very evident going through Marketing Hometown America. Just their way of communication between Snapchat, Instagram, Facebook. You know, they're not picking up a newspaper. I don't think I can even tell you the last time my daughters looked at a newspaper. That's just not their go-to by any means. Their friends, their connections, and their peers is much more important. Poor work culture, you know, they're kind of here today, gone tomorrow. If they don't like something, they're on to the next move. So, how are we gonna entice these millennials to stay in our community? Because the other problem on the flip side we have is we have an aging population here in our community. And what I gave you were some of the demographics of Washburn. And if you look at the demographics of Washburn, our largest population here in Washburn, the biggest number is our population that's 45 to 64. Well, 45 to 64, you have set incomes, they're retiring. They have a lot of minors and people that work at GRE that are about to retire. Are they gonna stay in Washburn or are they gonna move away? What's gonna keep them here? Those are some of the questions that we talked about in our meetings. So, with this older population coming, millennials moving in possibly, do we have what it takes to keep the millennials here? Or, the people that have graduated from Washburn, North Dakota and moved, what do we have to bring them back to the community? So, those are just some of the things. And as you go through these demographics, it's actually very interesting to see kind of the medium, median income and so forth. So, by no means take a look at those at your leisure. But, something that was done that kind of led some of our conversations was a survey of rural challenges. And I put the website on your agenda. But, this is where they talked about some of the... Small-town people are seen as their biggest challenges. And everything from the resistance to change among city leaders to community members to, you know, everyone involved. We have community conflicts, we have cliques, we have the young and old. We have longtime residents versus new residents. We have residents that have been here 17 years but may have not been born here, raised here, graduated from here. And after 17 years, they're still not members of the community or they're still not from here. So, they're kind of not pushed aside, but just not held as in high account as maybe someone that did grow up here and graduate from here.
Tana, is that in order of importance, one through five? So, resistance to change.
Yes.
Among local leaders and events was number one.
You know, and something with that is, you know, resistance to change. Change is a process, it takes a while. And it's just something that we need to start doing little by little. You know, and this Marketing Hometown America was just one step in that process. So, I was very happy that 33 people stepped up and said, "Hey, we wanna be a part of this process." But yeah, once you go through the one through five there, tourism opportunities. You know, here in Washburn, we're kind of fortunate with the tourism we have. But, there's some things that I found out going through this process I didn't know existed. So, as part of developing the marketing materials that we are already in the process of, those are some of the things that we're gonna be focusing on. So, decline in population, so on and so forth. We need new residents, we need to maintain that tax base, and what's it gonna take to keep them here? So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jody. Again, Jody's from the NDSU Center for Community Vitality. She's an Extension Specialist, and she was one of the co-authors on this program.
Thank you. Can I just stand here?
Sure.
Yeah. So, as Tana said, I'm Jody Bruins, and I'm an Area Community Vitality Specialist with an NDSU Extension. However, I work out of the community of Ellendale. So, I know all about small community and have worked with many communities between here and every corner of the state. And so, just real quick about what this program is. So, this is called Marketing Hometown America. And we wrote this as a, it was a USDA grant. And in the back, you'll, I'm not gonna go through all this, time is precious here. But, just so you understand the whole point of this program. So, it started as a USDA grant to look at what images communities use to market their community. So, you know, most communities have a website or some marketing materials. And the research was done. So, when people see specific images, what do they think about their community? You know, I could look at the same wall hanging in my home for 20 years and still think it's pretty awesome. And then one will come and go, "Maybe I'll throw that thing out." So, you know, some of the things, the pictures in this are kind of interesting. And I, this one is very telling. This is a beautiful old country church. And I thought, "Oh, that's a really lovely picture." I could identify with it, there's a couple out in my neck of the woods. However, when a stranger was asked about this, "How do you view this?", some would view this as an old church no longer being used because the snow has now been moved. So, we just never know what people might perceive as progressive or a beautiful community. And certainly, when I drive through communities, I pay attention to, when you drive through, I pay attention to, do they have a walking trail? And how wide are the streets? Do people have flower baskets out? Is trash picked up or lawns mowed? And so, just as a traveler, I'm sure you pay attention to things like that too. And so, as a kind of springboard from that, we developed, some colleagues of mine in South Dakota Extension and Nebraska Extension developed this. Basically, it's a conversation guide. And so, there's four sections where they, first of all, folks kind of introduce themselves, get to know each other, what brought you here. And so, the second one, I think it was the third one I came to, wasn't it, Tana? Okay, up at Ag Country, so we met there. And it's very deliberate. It's not like the chit-chat that happens at the coffee shop or the senics in the morning. But it's very deliberate, so there's specific questions that are asked of the group that's participating. And the facilitator's asked just to keep people on track because conversation can get you around pretty quickly. So, it's all focused around things that are happening in the community. And some of the things that I saw that were so impressive that night is how many assets you have in your community that people who have lived here for a very long time did not even know existed. And the energy in the room that night, people were so excited and ready to get to work, which was pretty cool. And that's the best part of my job, is to work at communities where people love where they live and wanna continue to do great things. So, the whole point is, when this is done, the group came up with a lot of great ideas of things they wanna put some energy to. And so, I think that's really the focus of tonight, is to just report out, let the general public know what the groups have been working on and know if someone's passionate about a particular issue, whether it be your trail or some of the things on the list. I think the group will talk about that, really to find other people that wanna work on those things and beat the bushes a little bit. Maybe there's some money out there to help do that. And so, I appreciate, you know, the formal leaders in this community, just entertaining the group and listening to see what happens. It's certainly not one more thing to put on your list of things to do, but certainly just awareness of what they've been up to because I think they've accomplished some pretty great things so far. So, Tana had asked me to just give you a couple of examples of things of other communities that have done this. So, one thing, the community of Ashley went through this. And they didn't, they met a couple of times when I was there and went through some of this dialogue. And one thing that they recognized is that the youth in their community don't necessarily recognize that there are job opportunities there. I mean, I know that sounds like a no-brainer, but if nobody ever says, "You know, there are good careers in the community and in the region." Oftentimes, high school students don't know that that's a consideration. Get a job and come back and be an accountant or a farmer or a business person or whatever that might be, that there are opportunities in our communities. And so, they were going to put some focus to that. A colleague of mine here from Mount Vernon, South Dakota, everybody knows where that's at, they really had a housing crunch. And so, they formed a housing authority and started building spec homes. And so, they're on their fourth home right now. So, that was one of the projects they worked on. A couple others, they had a, I have my sheet over here, but one of the communities, they had a drive-in theater that was kind of on the way down. And they had some high school students that decided they wanted to take that project on. And so, let me see if I can find which community that was. Oh, Wald, we all know where Wald, South Dakota is, right Waldorf? So, they have a senior in high school there that's using that as their senior project. And the city council gave her a $2,500 grant to get it up to where it is. So, that's kind of cool. Parks Reform, the new action team, Housing Action Team. Highmore, South Dakota participated in this. You know, they did some small things like Mom of the Week, looking at purchasing banners for their Main Street. They formed a community in NDSA creating a community foundation. Does Washburn have a community foundation?
We do not.
Okay, so that's something to consider. So, that's matching funds, you have to put some money in, and then it's money that's always in, you know, serves forever. You never take the principal out, it just funds various projects in the community. So, something to think about. So, every community's different. There's no cookie cutter method, as you know. I think some of the best things about this program is to get people talking about a specific issue and not coming to another city council meeting and complaining about something. I'm sure people don't do that here. But, you know, maybe it's your garbage issue or whatever the issue of the week is. But it's typically a positive experience when people talk about, "How do we market our community?" And I know how important, in my school system, if five new families would move in, wowza, I mean, that's the jackpot, right? So, you know, think about things that people, why would people wanna move here? And I think this group came up with some really great things. Certainly, the unintended consequences are always the highlight of what happens. So, and I think maybe someone from your group, maybe Calla, whomever can talk about some of those things that they learned when they went through this. So, you have a great community here, I love to visit here. So, be proud of what you have here many communities do not have, you guys have going on. And I know when we live here, we kind of get mired in the negativity, but as an outsider, I think it's pretty awesome. Thank you for taking your time and going through this.
Thank you. Any questions for Jody?
You have a good answer.
Thank you.
Later too.
Sure.
Thanks, Jody. All right, I'm also gonna stand. I am Laura Gardner. I am of Jack of all trades, master of none. I'm a youth group director, photographer, florist, and mom of four. I grew up in Washburn. I moved away, I swore I would never, ever, ever come back. Next month marks 11 years that my husband and I moved back here. I lived on the East Coast for a while, and that gave me a really, really good dose of reality. And that kind of spurred my thought process to get back here. My husband, he was born in Ithaca, New York. And then he kind of bounced around a few places, and he ended up in a small town too. So, before we got married and we were looking to come back here, he was in a horrific car accident just days before we were supposed to move back. And he'd only been here a couple times before we had moved back. And he was absolutely floored by the generosity bestowed on him by our community. We stayed with my mom and dad once we moved, once we got him out of the hospital. And you would not believe all the goodies that showed up. He unfortunately had his jaw wired shut, so he couldn't enjoy it. But he should have appreciated the sentiment. One thing too, Tana had asked me, being a photographer, I've got lots of pictures here that I'm gonna share with you guys. Growing up here, I don't think I realized like the treasure trove of just like historical stuff that we have here. And then on top of that, I didn't realize how amazing our community is. Again, coming back and then having my camera, I love being able to showcase just how beautiful it is here. I think sometimes beings that we like here and we see this stuff like almost every day, we get a little complacent, and I think we kind of tend to take that for granted. So, I'm gonna show some of my favorite spots. All of these are within a 20-minute radius of Washburn here. And that's one thing that I hope you guys kind of get out of this too, is just to kind of take a step back and realize all the awesome things that we have going on here. Just recently, I got to take our youth group to Pine Ridge, South Dakota, to the reservation down there. And we met up with two groups, one from Boulder, Colorado, and one from St. Louis, Missouri. And they were thinking that we were like total country bumpkins. They're like, "Well, how big is your town?" I'm like, "Oh, it's a small town." Well, when you say small town to them, they're thinking like 50,000. And they're like, "Well, how big?" I'm like, "Well, we don't even have a stoplight." And we have to drive 45 minutes to get to the nearest target. And of course, they're like, "Why would you live there? Do you live in the country?" And throughout the week, as we got to explain to them, living here and living in such a community where we do have the village mentality, you know, you've heard that adage, "It takes a village to raise a child." I truly feel like we have that here. And again, I think that's something that we forget. I've lived in neighborhoods where I've gotten text messages at 11 o'clock at night telling me I left the trunk open on my car, or that our dog had gotten out and we come home and he's tethered to the front deck. Or, we've come home and we don't own our house. I shouldn't say that. We come home and there's vegetables in our, you know, sitting on our step. And that is so nice. And so, it was kind of fun to get to explain to these people the perks of living in such an awesome community where people really look out for each other and they genuinely care about each other. Another perk too, when you have children, if they're being naughty, it's nice when people let you know when they're up to shenanigans.
Being the child, not always.
So, with that, I just wanna encourage everyone to take a step back and just really recognize the amazing things that we have going on here, how beautiful it is. And I think our number one asset is our community. Not like the physical structures and stuff, but the people that live here. I think that's a big part of what makes Washburn absolutely incredible. I need to try and market that somehow. So, with that being said, I'll turn it over to Beth.
Hey, Laura. Hi, I am Beth, and so, I, same as Laura, I grew up here, graduated from here, moved away, swore I would never come back, for the reason of everyone always knows what your children are doing. But now that I have a child, I kind of like that. Love it here, I wouldn't wanna be anywhere else after, you know, I only lived in Bismarck, but it's a lot different than here, you don't have that. Neighbor calling you and saying you left your trunk open, you don't get that down there. So, what I did after, I believe it was our first meeting, I contacted the school, Mr. Hanson, his sixth grade class, and asked if he would be willing or have time to have his students tell us what we like about Washburn. You know, what do the younger generation like about here and what do they not like? A lot of the students like the pool, love the pool. These pictures are priceless. They are, I will pass them around, they're, they're great. Most of them are also the dislike is, "We don't have any fast food in town." You have to drive to Bismarck to get to McDonald's. And one of my favorite ones is a child who said, at sixth grade, "I never would have thought this." Their favorite thing is Main Street. They like the Memorial Wars, the café, the newspaper place. And they said they hope to own a business on Main Street someday. So, that was very interesting, because like I said, sixth grade, I never thought that. You know, there's no dog park, there's, these are just some things that are important to those younger students that if we can improve it, maybe they'll come back after college. I will pass these around for you guys and turn it over to Calla?
Yep. Thanks, Beth. Those pictures really are priceless.
They really are. That was the highlight of that session, right?
Yes.
Really was.
Okay, I know some of you, my name is Calla Edwards. I'm the Ag and Natural Resources Extension Agent here in Washburn. And I had the opportunity, Tana emailed me and asked me if I would be interested. So, I had the opportunity to facilitate six out of the eight sessions for Marketing Hometown America. And in doing that, I kind of had the unique opportunity. We had meetings both Wednesday nights and Friday mornings. And I was able to attend sessions both nights. And what was fascinating to me was how similar, even though we had different people on our Friday session from our Wednesday session, how similar the things that were coming out in each session really were. And as a facilitator, that's really great to see because we don't have, you know, polar opposites. We don't have one group saying one thing and another group saying something completely different. I grew up in a small business, I have a degree in business. And that's really, from a business standpoint, that makes marketing easier if we don't have such a wide range. And one of the parts, one of the things that we tried to come out with from this project is, how do we market Washburn? I'll admit, I grew up in Kansas, I grew up in a town of about 3,500. So, kind of a small town, but much bigger than Washburn. And one of the things I watched through high school was our Main Street, our square around the courthouse started to die. Businesses moved, like '83, we had a major highway come through, and businesses moved to the major highway. But a group of people got together and they said, "We're not letting Main Street die. We're not letting our historic downtown die." And what's been amazing to me in the 10 years since I left high school, basically every building on that block is completely full. And so, for me, small towns where I grew up, I'm really passionate about them. So, I was happy that I got to do this. And I kind of approached it, the goal was to kind of create a marketing plan. And so, on the last session, when I was helping facilitate, I looked at the people and I said, "We need to treat Washburn as a business. If we can't get new customers, new families moving in, we're gonna go backwards." And that's not the direction we wanted to go. And from a marketing standpoint, you really need one message. If we have five different messages going out, it's not a cohesive unit. And we won't reach the groups we really wanna reach. So, in our, in our fourth session, we came up with kind of what we thought the marketing message of Washburn was. So, we have everything from Historic Washburn. I believe the city uses Washburn on the Missouri. We have the grandest little city on the Missouri. And they're all great messages, but they're not the kind of message that's going to draw a new family in. And that was kind of what we wanted to do. And so, the theme that we came up with, the idea is Washburn, where history was made and your future begins. And we really thought that resonated with people. It's a personal message, and your future really signals that this is a place that people can come and they can stay, they can raise a family. So, through, through our sessions, kind of the overall theme was, the people that we really want to bring to Washburn, we want to keep the people that are here, obviously. But we also want to bring in younger individuals, families that are gonna come, they're gonna stay, they're gonna set roots, their kids are gonna go through the school system. We want people that have maybe trade skills. One of the things that came up, kept coming up is, you know, Keith is gonna be retiring at K&amp;D. Who's going to replace him when he does decide to retire? There's not someone that specializes in home appliances necessarily in Washburn. So, who's going to take that? Right now, people go to Washburn and they bring in someone from Washburn. There's enough business in the area that someone could take over that. We don't have a dentist. We have almost everything else you could need medical-wise, but there's not a dentist in town. So, young families, people with trade skills. Someone said that, what was it, 60% of the power plant is gonna be retiring in the next few years, give or take?
That was, I followed up on that, it wasn't quite as accurate as we heard it to be, but there's quite a few that will be retiring.
So, but we need people to take over that. So, those are kind of our target markets. Tana talked a little bit about millennials. Millennials are kind of, they fit that bill. They're the age group we're kind of looking for, they have some of the skills that we're kind of looking for. And marketing to millennials is very different from marketing to previous generations. Typical advertising, like you said, the newspapers, some of those things don't necessarily work with us. And I will admit, I'm a millennial. I look at advertising, I watch radio ads, listen to radio ads, watch TV. But if I'm really trying to figure out if a product is something I wanna do, I'm going to read reviews online, I'm gonna get ahold of my friends and say, "Hey, I'm thinking about doing this. What do you guys think? What's been your experience?" And that's not something that we had in previous generations. So, some of the ways that we thought to market to our, to our groups, social media is big. Facebook, we have Waita pages, we have other pages. But we need to make sure that we're getting the information out in the medium that they are using. Snapchat and Instagram are two other ones. And Snapchat has come out with some interesting new features in the last week that let you see what other people are doing around you. I don't use Snapchat, I have friends that do, but Snapchat's another one. Word of mouth is really big with the millennials. And I know Tana's been working on some really unique marketing material that I think's gonna be great to reach people. That's coming up eventually in the future. You know, other ways, Riverboat Days, you get a lot of people coming in for Riverboat Days. There's been talk of an all-school reunion. It's another great way, you have people coming back, wide variety. There's all different kinds of ways that we can market. Other towns have done some other things. I believe it's Garrison that does an incentive program for their teachers. There's other groups and communities that have done programs to encourage people to do it, to come in. And that could be something that we look at in the future for Washburn, to keep, to get more people coming in. You have to have something, you have to have reasons, you have to have draws to get people to come. And as various people have said, Washburn has a wide variety of them. And as various people have said, Washburn has a wide variety of them. Where history was made, we have the Lewis and Clark Interpretive Center. We have the Historical Society Downtown. There's a lot of history, but where it's a very safe community. And a lot of people, my generation, we go to college in the big towns and we want that safety when we come back. I don't, personally, I don't like having to lock my vehicle 'cause I always forget something. And then I forget that he's inside, so then that makes me nervous. But, safety is a big one. One that resoundingly echoed throughout all of our sessions was the school system. We're very proud of our school system and we have an excellent school system here in Washburn. That is a big draw, especially for people with kids. Especially if you're moving from Bismarck, where possibly bigger class sizes to a smaller school. Recreation is a prime here in Washburn. Between the river, the fishing, hunting. If you're not one of those, you don't like hunting and fishing, there's the bike trail. There's walking trails and the golf course. Those are all things that I looked for when I was looking for a community to move to. And those are things that we can use to draw people in. Now, there are a few things. Every community has things that we could do to make a community more marketable. Some things that we came up with were things like a community-wide cleanup day. Growing up in school, senior class, we spent an entire day and the parks and recreation, the city had various projects for people to do. And our school counselor compiled a list. She split the kids up and away we went. And it was a great way for the community to get a lot of things done. We do, the city has a community-wide cleanup where you can pick things up on the curb. The Lions Club picks up trash along the highway a couple times a year. But we like to do things throughout the year to kind of increase that. One of the comments we heard about the walking trail was, you know, sometimes there's a lot of trash. And the city is busy, the park board is busy. They don't have time to necessarily go and make sure that the trash is picked up all the time. And that's something that we as a community, that the community members can take charge of. Couple things that also came up. When I go to a town, I like to know, I like signs. The Interpretive Center is here. If I need a pharmacy, it's down here. I can't count the number of times that I've been stopped when I've been walking around the community from people out of town going, "I need to pick up, you know, some screws. Where's a hardware store?" So signage is something that was also identified. And that's something that Tana's been working on. There's a grant available for signs for the city of Washburn. And that was something that came up. Another thing that came up is, to make a community more marketable, millennials tend to like to be kind of active. They like to be kind of fit. And at the time, there wasn't a fitness center in the area. Since this has started, we have a fitness center that's opened up just south of town. As someone who has family, I'm from Kansas originally, so I have a family that comes from a long distance. I'm lucky enough that I have a place for them to stay. You know, places for people to stay in Washburn is kind of at a premium. And that's something between Riverboat Days, during the county fair, they were expecting forty cars to come for their enduro. But because there wasn't a place for people to stay and the chance of rain, half the cars didn't come 'cause there wasn't a place for people to stay. So place hotels, some type of hotel is also an opportunity that we think could make our community more marketable.
And we have talked with the current hotel and, I mean, I don't know, if you guys watch, kind of parking lot there, it happens to be one of my favorite pastimes, but... You know, you take note, but it's full. And that's what the manager says too, "It's full." And so as far as upgrading or doing more improvements, they're not interested. They don't have to. They have, you know, the people coming in, whether it's the plant shutdown or the ethanol plant during their shutdown or whether it's just traffic coming through the area. You know, it is always busy, so. But then you have people that come for graduation or even like this fishing tournament this last weekend. We probably could've built another hotel, but we just don't have that opportunity today.
One of the things that also came out from some of the older generations that came to our meetings is, they're looking at the future. They're going to retire. When they get to an age where they can't stay in their home anymore, there's not a place for them to move into here in Washburn at this point. And I know that's something that's kind of in the works. We have an individual that's doing some planning on it right now. But we wanna bring younger generations in, but not by shoving the older generations out. That was also something that has come up. I have a dog. Yes, he's licensed, Joan. So, but, you know, I like to take my, I love taking him on walks. We're lucky enough to have a yard. But it'd be really nice to have a place where he could go and have a playdate with other dogs. And I know a dog park, being a pet-friendly city was one of the things. I know millennials, we love our pets. And having a pet-friendly city is another big thing that came out.
Some of the others? Anybody else join in too?
Yes, please chime in.
I hear about fish cleaning station was something that came up. We have a lot of ice fisherman in the area. And there's several spouses, they get tired of their significant other spouse playing fish in the house. So the current fish station that we have, is it something where we can enclose it and put a wall unit up there that can heat and cool and ventilate? I think it's a possibility. And we were talking about just this last weekend with the fishing tournament. We were almost bedding. Help me out here, guys. We put a jar up on the counter at the bar at the horseshoe tournament. We probably could've gotten it funded. I just, there's a lot of people in the area that it's very important to them, so. But an indoor heated...
Indoor heated. A gazebo. There's people that go up and down the river in kayaks, canoes, places for them to pull off, take a break, and that's actually something that's in the process.
Yep, the park's board just last week approved a gazebo down by the river, just right off the ferry. And it's something that, it'll have a bright red roof on it. And kayakers, as they come down, can pull off. And it's down by that lower shoreline. And they can pull off and come up and picnic. It will have the new picnic table that the civic club bought. And it will also have the maps that I'm developing. It'll have the new Disc Golf map and it will have the community map and other information on it too, so.
But those are all kinda things that we, as a community, we felt were kinda needed. Things that we can, things that we could do, things that the community can do as well to help bring new people into Washburn. One of the key things that we also noted is communication. Within any community, within any business, communication is one of the keys. And as I work with Extension, I have the opportunity to interact with a lot of different groups. And one thing I've noticed is, we have a lot of groups that do things in Washburn, but they don't necessarily communicate with the community and communicate with each other to let everyone know what's going on. I can't, I mean, I am new to town, so my network is not really developed. Still working on it, but, you know, sometimes I find out about an event that I would love to go to and I find out about it two days after it happens. And that, that always happens. But I think as a community, we need to really work on communication, both between groups, businesses, individuals, between the commission, between Extension, between county commission as well, just so that we're all kind of on the same page. 'Cause without being on the same page, it's not gonna work. You know, we can continue to send out lots of messages, but, you know, it's not necessarily going to be as effective as if we have one message that we're all sending out to bring people to town or to keep people here.
I started doing the monthly community roundtable where I invite businesses, organizations, boards, what have you, to come first Wednesday, or third Wednesday at eight-thirty every month. And simply what we're talking about is what's going on or what they have coming up. And the Lions Club, the Park Board, I mean, different organizations, or, I mean, Calla comes. We're talking. And what it also does is it helps me to know what's put up on the community sign, which is another communication tool we have. But we have that outlet for communication now. The other thing is, part of it is as we're talking, they're also talking about needs. What do we need? You know, maybe the Lions help, Lions Club needs help with an event coming up or what have you. I mean, you guys get the picture. It's just, it's a communication tool.
One of the other really unique things that came out of this is a committee formed. So we saw a need. There's groups that take care of a lot of things, but like the community-wide cleanup. Another one that came out was, actually came out at the community roundtable, was the issue with the dogs and not getting the rabies shots, not getting licensed. So an idea came at one of the community roundtables of, well, what if someone gets something together where the vet in Garrison comes down and offers a discount on rabies shots if you come on Tuesday between two and four? And it's here in Washburn, so there's no excuse that you have to drive thirty minutes. And then, you know, what would happen if then, not only did they get the rabies shot, but then right there was where they had to get their, get their tag to be registered with the city? And, you know, we could also bring in maybe the Humane Society out of Mandan. The Central Dakota Humane Society brings animals up, so then they could have adoption and, you know, call it the Dog Days of Summer. But there wasn't a group to plan these things, to coordinate with the city, to coordinate with different groups. And so one of the things that came out of this was, a group of us got together and we kind of formed, you know, a bettering Washburn community to plan the community-wide cleanup in the spring and the fall, to plan some events to help out. Because we don't expect this process to come to the, to come to you guys and say, "Here, this is what we wanna do. You guys have to do it." That's not the point of this. The point is to get the community involved. So as a city, we're helping to make Washburn a place that more people want to come and live.
That community, the other key to it is follow-up from our Marketing Hometown America. You know, it's consistent, you know, follow-up on the different projects that we do have offline. If you look at, I gave you another handout, things we can do to make our community more marketable. You know, these are all things that came up during our sessions. But, you know, some of them are underway, some of them are not. Some of them, as the city commission, maybe we need to think about. Do we need to incentivize from the city? Do we need to, you know, come up with some kind of funding? You know, there's a lot of things here that we can do quite easily, but there's also some that we can't. So it's things we're gonna have to think about as a community so that we are positioned to move forward.
Are there any questions for any of the people that did Marketing Hometown America?
What was the slogan again?
"Where history was made and your future begins." It's, I have a lovely poster. I love those flip charts that have lines on them. I love you like Dr. Seuss, Dr. Seuss pictures where everything's at an angle. I taught high school for three years, the poor kids, they kinda had to tilt their head to get everything in right.
The other thing we have is, "Where history was made and your adventure begins." And we'll list all the different recreation. "Where history was made and," help me out, guys, I'm in a loss. "Adventure, your future."
Just "where history was made."
"Where history was made" and have all the historic things. And Jeremy Olson with Two for One Inc. here locally is already starting to work on all those materials for us in conjunction with Laura Gardner will help us. And, you know, we'll come up with the right photos and so forth.
I guess Jody, when you looked at the website and you were looking at her pictures and all that, what was the, what was the result of that audit? I mean, looking good?
Wow, I mean... It's better than most. Yeah, I mean, I'm no web expert. I guess just as an outsider, take a look at some community. Just pull a random community. Go to Botno's website, take a look and assess that. I mean, I just think the greatest mistake a community can make is to create a website and never go back to it. And I know when we travel, that's what we'll do is we'll take a look at a website to find out what's going on in the community for the weekend or whatever. You know, just one thing too that was mentioned in this, in the dialogue here, is a report card about what specifically do people appreciate in their community? And I know people move because they have a job. But it is an employee market right now and there are jobs everywhere. And research shows that we're going through, ten years ago, we had a brain drain for the last forty years. Meaning that students would graduate and never come back. And now research is showing that millennials are starting to think that where they grew up is okay. And jobs aren't necessarily local, just bring them back because there are jobs everywhere. But a community has to have things for people to do. And it has to be a nice place to live. And so I butt heads with community people often that go, "We just need more jobs." Well, you know, that really isn't the case anymore. People wanna live in a nice place. They wanna live where things are happening, where things are going on, where people are doing things to make it a great place to live. And so, you know, things to do and things that are happening are important. And to be able to market that and to have fresh pictures on your website and post things that are happening just are so essential. I was so shocked at how many tourists come through this community. When I was at Ag Country with all of you, I was just shocked. I had no idea tours and that comes through this community. And what people didn't realize, well, a few people I know that came up didn't realize they could rent four-wheelers or rent some of those things. They could kayak. And just different things that local people didn't realize, there was scouts and... What, I mean, so when Tana talks about just communication, you can't promote it, you don't know. And I think that was one of the lightbulb moments that came out of that session where people just went, "We had no idea we had all this going on." And so, you know, maybe that's something that is free. I mean, a website is cheap advertising. And, you know, I know a lot of people will say, "Ah, not on Facebook. That's, we don't need that." Well, you may not be on Facebook, but a whole generation of other people are. And so as much as I deny Snapchat in my life, I know that I need to be there. And, you know, so I, I think a lot of it's just being open to the possibilities. You know, it may not be for you, but again, if you keep five people in a community or recruit five people or five families, I mean, in a community this size or the community that I come from, that's huge.
And I guess, you know, we're kinda here today being the cheerleaders of the community, but we're also here to say, there's a lot of stuff that, you know, is going on favorably in Washburn. You know, there's stuff that hits our newspaper. I'm not picking on you, Alyssa, but, you know, there's stuff, situations that hit our newspaper that isn't always favorable, that, you know, a lot of people get stuck on that, you know, there's so much bad going on in Washburn or bad press or, you know, all of that. We have a lot of good going on in Washburn too. We just need to keep the momentum going. But we also need to be prepared for the future. What does that look like? You know, doing some of these, you know, things to make our community more marketable are things that should be on our agendas. I look at grants every day and there's money out there to be had, but there's also gonna have to be possibly some tax dollars that are put forward to some of this too. Because just our group can't do it without the help of the city too. So I just, I hope. I know the streets have taken a huge focus from the city commission, but also there's other things too that we need to be thinking about. Especially if we have this generation that's retiring and some of them will be moving off, we'll have millennials coming in. It's just things that we all need to be thinking about and not just by ourselves at home, you know, at night. It's discussions that need to be had. So, and talking about work, work environment, not to put you on the spot, Jamie, but I'm going to. So Jamie Nelson is the president of Farmer's Security Bank. You probably all already knew that. But talk about your health program that you guys have going. Because this is something that, right now, I've actually liked to work Farmer's Security Bank 'cause it sounds like fun. It's friendly competition, it's fun. And her employees, I mean, and Jamie also just said this, "Thank you for supporting this program." Because I think there is everybody but one person that was involved in this Marketing Hometown America. but one person that was involved in this Marketing Hometown America. So talk about a local business being involved in the community. But, talk about your health program.
Um, well, it's just something that we decided we wanted to do. We've kind of talked about it since January, and, you know, a lot of times we talk and talk and talk, and it never happened, and one day, we just decided to all buy Fitbits, and the bank chipped in and helped to pay for a little bit of the cost of those, and we started a walking challenge, and we track it in the back, and we just award time off or gift cards, or just fun things in-house that we can do to motivate healthy living. But it's amazing, we walked four hundred and thirty-two miles as a group collectively for the first week. So, and we only have ten people, so I mean, that's a lot of walking.
It's kind of funny, you'll drive by and see one of the employees, and I heard someone say, "Yeah, I offered somebody a ride," and they're like, "Nope, gotta give my steps in." Tony was on vacation last week, and they're all tracking Tony's steps, and they're like, "What is he doing?"
I lost quite three thousand.
It just makes, you know, it just makes for a great work atmosphere, we have a lot of fun with it, it's, it's been a lot of fun. We've started a water bar in the back, where we spice up our water with fresh fruit, cucumbers, that type of stuff. We're trying to implement ten-minute exercises in the back in the morning, but that's yet to come, but... So yeah, we're having a lot of fun, and, you know, we're out walking on our breaks, utilizing the walking trail, that's a lot of fun, so, gets us outside too.
Yeah. So, I mean, those are just things that some of the businesses are doing. I did the bench program, the bench and the planter program, where I challenged all the businesses in Washburn to add a bench and a planter to the front of their business, and they would be entered into a drawing. We had a few businesses that entered, but it was fun to see that, you know, people were participating and having fun with it, and it was in the newspaper, and, you know, it's just, it's little things. One of the things we're gonna be doing is, doing a contest with, take a picture, you know, in your community, of something that, you know, help me out here, things they like about Washburn, basically. You know, and it's our way of getting some photographs coming in, is to see what people are looking at too. You know, something else, we talked about at the very beginning of our sessions, was the white building, and, oh my God, that white building on Main Street is such an eyesore, oh my God. Well, I know several people, including me, that has walked into that building and talked to them lately, and it's like, "Okay, what are you doing?" "We're replacing the roofs, and we may have offices," and I'm like, "What?" So, I still have yet to talk to them, but, you know, there's some opportunities coming up, and someone just decided it was time to develop that building and refurbish it, so...
We're gonna need to wrap this up pretty soon, 'cause we have another meeting coming up in like seven or eight minutes, so you, wrap up for us.
So, I guess, questions from you guys. I mean, what did you guys gain from our presentation today?
I really liked the slogan. It's really a nice slogan, you know? And I like some of, I like these ideas as far as the canoe map, and our kayak map, and those type of things, and many of the other ideas are, would be really nice assets to the town.
I like the signage for businesses, you know, something, you know, to say what's available in town, and that's probably pretty good.
So as these committees form, the committees are going to engage quite possibly the folks that a portfolio is within the city commission, so, and likewise, I think we'll engage back.
You know, and that's something, I guess, I don't know, maybe others do, I don't know who's got what portfolios. Noelle participated, you know, in our Marketing Hometown America. I know what she has, but I don't know what everybody has as far as portfolios, as we do start engaging with some of these.
Yeah, they're listed on the website as well, where we can, yeah, we can get a slip to you, some information.
Kit, what do you think?
It's wonderful.
What part do you work?
I think it's all good, you know, as far as, you know, a lot of you guys are talking about your, you know, something with the kids to do, and, you know, places to live for the old people, and, you know, there's, there's a lot of stuff that should be done. The motel, another hotel, well, you know, it's been tried, and, you know, and I'm sure it's kind of everybody's eyes, they hear that, kind of get negative, or, you know, like it ain't really gonna happen, but, you know, the, the biggest deal right now is, is coming up with some land, you know, for, we wanna do a lot of this stuff, and it's great and wonderful, and I'm all for it, don't get me wrong by any means, but, you know, we gotta find some land to, to do some of this stuff with. And I think that's gonna be our biggest struggle right now, is to get some land that's reasonable, and not pay just because somebody's looking to retire off of ten acres, you know, and that, and if we can get something with some land done, I think our opportunities are endless.
You know, I was looking at, I forget what, is it the GIS website, where you can see who owns the different parcels? You know, the city of Washburn owns quite a few parcels, and it might not be some of the ideal locations, but, you know, maybe that's something that we need to be thinking about too, is some of these opportunities can be on city land, and how we make that happen. Again, it might not be the ideal location, but, you know what, it's in the community, we can promote it, you know, it's there. So, I think if you keep thinking about the renters that own the land on the other side of the highway, and different people around the community, but there's some other land too, that we could do some of the things that we're talking about, not doing the baby steps, but, you know, at least we get the momentum going. And what I hope is that we don't lose the momentum that this group has already got going, so, and I hope we're really contagious.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you so much.